I'd like to call to order the work session. The date is 24th of September, and we are all present. Hello, everybody. I'm going to just take a quick moment to thank everybody for your cards and your flowers and all that, and your prayers. And I'm here. I'll say I'm here, gentlemen. Maybe not 100 percent. (laughing). Are you two? Okay. Yes, kind. Okay, let's go on to the agenda. We only have one in this evening.
To mention more.
I'd like council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete. Krista Plant, Neighborhood Services and Coordinator, Erin Caldwell, our outside consultant, will present. We're looking forward to this. I did read some of it when I was resting. I was amazed, so.
Thank you. Welcome back, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, I am here today with Erin Caldwell, Director of Research for National Research Center, to review the results of our 2018 Citizen Satisfaction Survey. The last time we conducted the survey was in 2015. You got the report out in early 2016. And this most recent survey was administered in the month of March and April of 2018. Erin?
Okay. Well, Mayor and Counselor, I am happy to be here this evening to present a summary of the findings from the Goodyear resident survey. But before I begin, I just wanted, on my behalf and my NRC colleagues, to thank Christina for being our contact. She was great to work with and provided a lot of thoughtful feedback during the process. I also want to acknowledge my colleague, DeMema Mann, who was actually the project manager for this survey and really did all the work. But she is at the annual conference of the International City and County Management Association, ICMA, and that's why she can't be here tonight to present the results. So speaking of ICMA, which is the acronym for the International City and County Management Association, they are partners with us for the National Citizen Survey. The NCS is a turnkey omnibus citizen survey service that allows municipalities and counties to assess resident opinion about their community and local government. There are over 400 participants in the NCS. In almost all states, we've got 46 states that have at least one jurisdiction that has participated. When we developed the National Citizen Survey, we did research into models for community livability and came up with our eight facets of community livability, anchored or centered around the idea of the quality of the overall community. We include items on the survey within all of these facets to provide a picture of how residents feel about their community. For the city of Goodyear implementation, which represents, as Christina said, the third time Goodyear has participated in the NCS, 3,200 households were randomly selected to receive the survey. These households were contacted by mail three times, and we received a total of 751 completed surveys, for a 24 percent response rate. I noticed that you surveyed a little more, as Christina said, than a year after the initial baseline survey in 2014, before again surveying in 2015, and then it's been about three years since. And I'll just say, we would generally recommend a surveying interval more in that two-to-three-year range. We do have some clients that survey annually, but that's generally not enough time between implementations to really see change in the item ratings. One of the advantages to a local government of participating in the NCS is the opportunity to compare your ratings to those from communities across the nation. National Research Center was the first organization to conceive of this idea, to create benchmarks of public opinion. And I'll tell you, the impetus for this was, the president of our company was my boss when we were working at the city of Boulder, and he had the director of street services come to him and say, "Please, could you find a way to compare us to other street services, rather than we always get beat up if we're compared to fire and library, which get higher ratings?" And so that kind of started us on that path. And sure enough, it was very consistent across lots of jurisdictions. And so we feel like that gives you a more fair comparison. And I should say, not only does our database include surveys from the NCS and other surveys that we at NRC conduct, but we try to collect surveys that we can find from other jurisdictions, you know, conducted by others, so that we have a pretty good representation. I think there's over 600 surveys now in our database. And now I'm finally going to move into a summary of your findings. I want to reassure you that this is just a summary. I'm going to highlight some of the findings, but not recite every survey statistic that could be found in the report. There'd still be a lot. There were 129 items from the survey that could be compared to the benchmarks, and of these, 20 received higher ratings and eight received lower ratings, while most, about 101, were similar to the benchmark. And I'll highlight some of these in future slides. In addition, there were also 129 items from the survey that could be compared to the 2015 survey results. And of these, 28 received higher ratings compared to 2015, 2 received lower ratings, and 99 received similar ratings. And again, I'll highlight some of these as we go through. This slide shows how residents rated the eight facets overall in Goodyear. So in this honeycomb, those colors represent a comparison to the benchmark, and you can see all of these are sort of that medium blue, so similar to the national benchmark in general. Residents were also asked how important they felt it was for the Goodyear community to focus on each of these facets in the coming two years. And the two that were given the highest priority were safety and the economy, and that's represented by that star there. So I'll just say, on this slide only, that star means these were the most important. On the future slides, that star generally means higher than the benchmark rating. So one of the noteworthy highlights from the survey results is that residents continue to rate the quality of life in Goodyear quite highly and feel that this is a safe place to live. Nearly all, 95 percent, of respondents reported that Goodyear is an excellent or good place to live, a rating that was higher than the benchmark. About nine in 10 residents rated their neighborhoods as an excellent or good place to live and thought that Goodyear was an excellent or good place to raise children or to retire. That rating of Goodyear as a place to retire was also above the benchmark comparison. About eight in 10 residents rated the overall appearance of Goodyear and the overall image as excellent or good. And compared to 2015, the rating in 2018 of the overall image of Goodyear represented an increase. About nine in 10 respondents said that they would recommend living in Goodyear to someone who asked, and also nine in 10 said that they plan to remain in Goodyear for the next five years. These findings are similar to the national benchmark and to what we observed in 2015. Ratings of feelings of safety and of the public safety services were high, and police services and crime prevention services received ratings above the benchmark comparison. Also of note, the proportion rating fire prevention as an excellent or good service increased in 2018 compared to 2015. As I noted earlier, safety was seen as a focus area for the community by residents, but it appears that the emphasis is on helping Goodyear to remain a safe community. Government performance ratings were positive, and confidence in the city of Goodyear government increased. Eight in 10 respondents rated the overall quality of city services as excellent or good, a rating that was again above the benchmark. Favorable ratings were also observed for the general government performance. The items shown here, plus a few others, the overall direction that the city of Goodyear is taking, confidence in city government, and the city being honest, received positive ratings from seven in 10 respondents, and most of these were above the benchmark comparison. And I can tell you, these are very good ratings, because I often see some communities where these ratings are at about 50 percent or even less. About six in 10 respondents felt that the value for taxes paid was excellent or good, higher than the benchmark comparison. And many of these sort of government performance ratings trended upwards from 2015 to 2018. The highest rated city services in terms of percent of respondents giving an excellent or good grade were waste collection services, sewer services, and public libraries. The lower rated, but still positive, were emergency preparedness, land use planning and zoning, and drinking water. And you can tell I didn't put this slide together, because this does that thing that I said I don't like, where we compare them kind of against each other. And so actually, all the items on this slide were similar to their benchmark comparison, both those that were above and those that were lower, with one exception, and that's drinking water quality, which was one of the few services that was lower than the benchmark In spite of relatively fewer respondents rating land use planning and zoning, which was on that last slide, as excellent or good compared to some of the other city services, Goodyear residents generally felt that Goodyear was a well-planned community with good mobility. 85 percent rated the overall ease of travel in Goodyear as excellent or good, a rating higher than the benchmark. When looking at ratings of ease of travel by different transportation modes, ease of travel by private vehicle or car was rated highly, and that rating was above the benchmark. We also looked at ease of travel by different modes. This just shows travel by bicycle, which was 57 percent. Travel by walking was viewed positively, with seven in 10 giving a good grade, and just over half-rated, or, I'm sorry, travel by public transit was viewed positively by only a third of respondents. However, those ratings were all similar to what we have observed in other communities. So public transit never has that great of a picture. There was an increase in ratings of transit and of walking in 2018 compared to 2015. Transportation infrastructure maintenance was also given high marks, and most ratings were higher than the benchmark comparisons. And actually, I'm going to skip ahead right here, just to keep talking about transportation for a minute. So when we looked at residents' use of alternate modes of travel, only about one in 10 had used public transit instead of driving alone, at least once in the previous year. About four in 10 had car pooled instead of driving alone. These rates were similar to what we have observed in other communities. However, air quality in Goodyear, which may be impacted by vehicle travel, was rated as excellent or good by only 56 percent of respondents, lower than the benchmark comparison, and lower than the rating from 2015. Of course, there's a myriad of factors impacting air quality, not just vehicle travel, and many of those are regional, not local in nature, but we wanted to point that one out. So going back. Oops, sorry, I missed my spot. Here we go. So I mentioned at the beginning, again, that we definitely noticed some services or community characteristics are rated lower than others. Land use planning and zoning is one of those. However, it was actually a fairly positive rating for the city of Goodyear. And for Goodyear, many of the items related to the built environment were given good ratings and were similar or above benchmark ratings. Seven in 10 respondents rated the overall built environment positively. The variety of housing options, the availability of affordable quality housing, and the cost of living were given ratings actually above the benchmark comparisons. In addition, ratings of land use planning and zoning and of code enforcement showed increases in 2018 compared to 2015. So besides just those sort of template items on the NCS, which allow us to make the benchmark comparisons, jurisdictions participating in the NCS can include questions of special interest to the community. Goodyear residents participating in the survey were asked how important, if at all, it was for the city to fund 10 programs or amenities to improve the quality of life in Goodyear. They could also say how important it was to fund none of the items on the list, and about two in 10 respondents considered it essential or very important to fund none of these 10 suggestions, meaning that eight in 10 actually did think it was important to fund at least one of them. And the ones that got the highest proportion rating as, you know, very important or essential included maintaining or improving parks and providing recreational opportunities. The ones that kind of got the, on the lower side, but still had 40 percent, nearly 40 percent, were building a city center or city hall or building a performing arts center. You may recall, near the start of my presentation, I mentioned that the economic health of Goodyear was one of the facets on which residents placed a high importance. We don't show it here, but I'll mention some of the evaluations by residents of Goodyear's economic vitality. Three-quarters felt that the overall economic health of Goodyear was excellent or good, similar to the benchmark, and an increase from 2015. Two-thirds rated economic development as excellent or good, also similar to the benchmark, and an increase from 2015. This slide shows the proportion of respondents feeling it was essential or very important to attract each type of new employer to Goodyear. Medical and healthcare employers were most likely to be considered important, followed by retail, high-tech manufacturing, and office or professional services. Residents were also asked how often they went outside Goodyear to participate in various activities. Two-thirds said they go outside Goodyear to go out to eat or to shop at least two times a month, and nearly a quarter of respondents said they dine or shop outside of Goodyear two times a week or more. There was one positive highlight. It's not shown on here. The proportion who said they go to movies outside of Goodyear actually decreased from 2018 to 2015, which I think is the impact of the new movie theater. I will also note that only three in 10 respondents felt that Goodyear has an excellent or good vibrant downtown or commercial area, one of the few ratings that was below the benchmark comparison.
Surprise? No comment.[946.23][946.23](laughing).
Survey participants were asked how much of a source, if at all, they considered various outlets to be for information about the Goodyear city government and its activities, events, and services. This slide shows the proportion considering each a major or minor source. The city website and the in-focus newsletter were at least a minor source of information for nine in 10 respondents, and actually, 62 percent considered the website a major source, and 55 percent thought that that newsletter was a major source. Not shown here are other city-maintained sources. The city's social media sites were a major source for about one quarter of respondents, and the e-notify email was a major source for two in 10 respondents. So in conclusion, I'll just highlight again a few of the takeaways that we at NRC found from your survey data. First, residents continue to feel that Goodyear offers a good quality of life and is a safe place to live. Generally, they are pleased with the ease of travel in Goodyear. And residents give high marks to the services offered by the city, and ratings of government performance are higher than the benchmark ratings. And I'll just throw in that one again about the local economy that was considered to be important priority. And maybe a place to focus is that ratings of the vibrant downtown or commercial area indicate this, you know, could be something you want to focus on. So these were the takeaways that we at NRC found in your data. We gave you a really lot of data. You've probably seen those reports. So, you know, that gives you the opportunity, and city staff, the opportunity to really dive deeper. We do detailed responses for every survey question, and for many questions, there's breakdowns of the results by respondent characteristics, like gender and age, or location of residents within the city. There's also comparisons of the survey results over time and those benchmark ratings. One of my favorite reports that's kind of buried in all of that is the Dashboard Report. This is a report I actually like for staff, because it shows a sort of one table on two pages, a summary of all those evaluative ratings, showing the percent rating positive, and then that comparison to the overtime and the benchmark. There's a brief article on our website that describes what we have called here the Six E's of Action, with short explanations of actions jurisdictions can take using their survey results. We had to work a little bit to use all E's, but these would be envision, engage, educate, earmark, and act or evaluate. And so we hope that you and/or city staff will dive deeper into the data relevant to department missions and start discussions about the findings and create action plans to continue to make Goodyear a great place to live, work, and play. So I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for that presentation, and it was delightful to read. It was nice to see some stars, see some improvement, and to see that many of us was right on track. So who would like to speak? Don't all raise your hand at one time. Kamali, you have a question?
I'll address this to the mayor, to start with. This may be something I need to address to the city manager. Do we, as a city, ever have an opportunity to ask the questions that are not so generic to our city, that we ask specific questions? Because it sounds like this is something many cities can use, and it's very generic. It doesn't tell us a lot. It tells us what we think we already knew, but I'm not familiar with how our city does the surveys. I don't know, I'm not involved in any of it, but it would be nice to know if, in fact, we could maybe for the next survey in two or three years, that we specifically ask questions specific to Goodyear, which would help us in planning more amenities or parks or whatever we need to do, because if you ask the average Goodyear citizen, "Do you like to live in Goodyear?", I've never found anyone that says, "Oh, my gosh, I hate it." You know, they all say, "Oh, no, I like it." And I say, "What do you like about it?" "Oh, I like everything." Well, that's very generic. So, but I'd like to have some more specific questions on the next survey, specific to Goodyear.
All right. Let me just, I'll turn it over to Winna in a moment. But we actually did, before, pertinent questions.
We did?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Through the years, we've done that. We've gone and targeted something. So maybe we lost that in the translation to get that information to you, but I'm going to let Winna, go ahead.
Well, actually, I'm going to ask the specific question, because I know each year we do add some of our own individual questions. Are we limited to the amount? Remind me that I think there are a limited number of questions.
There is. So on the NCS, we do, we have a place where you can ask your own questions, but it's, you know, about three-quarters of a page there. And so those questions about like the sources of information, what programs people would fund, those were the questions that were included on your survey in 2018 for that. So there is always that opportunity, and I'll say, you know, like I was saying, you might want to only do the NCS maybe every two to three years is probably a good cycle. Some communities, if they have more than three-quarters of a page of questions they want to ask, they might, in those off-years, do a survey that's only those sort of policy questions or, you know, topics that are facing the community in that moment that are really important to learn about. So that's, there's a couple alternatives there. You've got that three-quarters of a page. You could do a special survey, too.
Thank you.
Okay. Is council allowed to give input on what we would like to see? Who do we bounce that off of? I mean, how do these questions come to staff? Do staff arbitrarily come up with questions? Or do we do it?
I think we do a lot during council meetings. You tell the story often. I'm not, I'm not going against you, okay?
Yes, you are.
Yes, I am.[1320.33][1320.33](laughing). But we do tell the story all because of our demands. We want this, we want that, we don't have it, well, why can't we have it? Why don't you make it happen? So those are some of the things that are in here. But I will say, as a mayor, I don't want anybody to come again and feel like you feel. So if you, anybody on the council ever feels like that, then you come and tell us about it, and we'll try to make a change in it, and we'll be specific. So now I'm going to turn off the expert.
Well, Vice Mayor, Mayor, Council, we had five custom questions, and this year, particularly with an interest in maintaining something we could compare to the previous survey, the decision was made to not change the custom questions this year with an eye towards evaluating the custom questions in the future.
So mission accomplished in some of those, in a sense. I mean, we re-asked the question.
Well, we had, yeah, we had something to compare to, and now we have plenty of time to decide what would be the questions. We'd like our custom questions to be in the future.
Bill?
I think what Councilmember Campbell is expressing is the, it is not even knowing what those questions were ahead of time. And if the, am I right? And if the decision was made to keep the same questions as we had last time, I don't remember hearing that, but I'm not standing by my memory anymore either, so. But I think going forward, because we've, for so many years, we had the entire survey was customizable, hey, what 55 or 60 questions do you want to ask? And then we all punted around what those were. Going to the standardized format helped bring a lot of that together, but there are still those outliers that I think we want to know the answers to. You know, the questions about, everyone looked at me, I don't know why, about the downtown, we don't have one. So I'm actually really interested in two out of 10 people, what do those two people think the downtown is?[1459.86][1459.86](laughing).
And why would it be on it?
So, yeah, I mean, I don't know. So, and I think that just talks about the inherent, there's built-in flaws into a survey, and I think that just proves it. But overall, the feeling is good, and I think you're right. You know, now that we're getting into this time of the year and this cycle, we want it, I would love to drill down and know exactly what don't people like, what can we target? But if you ask me that question, I don't know that I can even give you an answer right now. So I think this is a great topic for, not this year's retreat, maybe next year's, before we get into ROLL, which would be the 2020 survey, because we did this in 2018. So, but I kind of support that we shouldn't feel frustrated by a survey, for crying out loud, because results are awesome.
First of all, I'm very pleased with the results. Not surprised, but I'm pleased with the results of how they view what the service levels that we're doing out there and what staff is doing. Overall, I don't see where anybody can be unhappy with those results. For me, from a takeaway, and even when we have a retreat coming up, if there's certain areas to focus on, because our budget is no more than a business plan. If our business plan is set to design to make improvements in areas that our citizens would like to see those improvements, then I'm for discussing, you know, that as we kind of move through and to see what those are. But it doesn't seem to be too many, but from a focus standpoint, I was kind of concerned, but not surprised, about the number of people that are going outside to eat and spend their retail dollars. And I know I sound like a broken record, but, you know, when it comes to our economic development plan, I would really like to see a focus in trying to addressing that to see if we can get those percentages down, where they're actually spending money eating here and retail shopping here. And I know we've had an opportunity, and I know there's some future opportunities coming where potentially we can start working on maybe a gathering point within the city as we do some of these negotiations, whatever. So I think that's buried in there somewhere, that our citizens would like to see that, especially if they're going out. And I was surprised how low going out for nightlife, because I'm not sure where there is nightlife in the city of Goodyear, to be honest with you, so, other than the movie theater. So that's what I'd like to see. But to me, there's always a takeaway from these things on how to always be better. But I'm very, very pleased with the overall results of where we're going and what our citizens think of the job we're doing.
Sherry?
Thank you very much for all the hard work. I'm kind of a data nerd, so I was sitting there looking and comparing, and I've got it all highlighted and everything, and to Joe's comment, the nightlife is in the downtown.[1641.11][1641.11](laughing). You know, and I don't think some of those responses were anything new to us. We know we want retail. We have been asking for retail. The city has been working for retail. I think one thing our citizens don't always know is how much we're trying to get that here and how little power we have, because we don't, as we were talking, we don't own the land to build the building. So I think that it just confirms what we knew. We need to keep at it and keep bringing it. We brought the Harkins, and there will be more coming, you know, announcements, announcements. But I think that was really good. I did have a couple questions, because what really, I really was interested in a lot of how you broke it down to regions. I did have a question about the water. When we asked the water, we also asked for north and central, and we don't do the water for that. So were those questions asked of everyone the same, even if it's not our water company?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I wasn't quite sure about that, because that, we don't supply all of that.
Right.
And, what? No, no, we should know. I just want to make sure it wasn't, because I do live in the south part and our water there, and hopefully, the Salt River Agreement that we've done, taking the steps, will improve that quality for those residents as well. My other one, question was with regard to the transportation. Obviously, again, we saw a big divergence between the south and the central and the north, and I don't know if there's funding or if there's something we can look at to help connect as we go forward in the future. That might be something we want to look, how do we connect better our southern, central and southern residents and western portions of Goodyear to where the shopping and everything will be? And I agree, I think the statistics really do confirm, and it's really well laid out, and I'll probably be looking and asking you more questions as we go through and everything, because I think when we get that gathering point. In the future, though, if we do ask a question about downtown, it would be interesting if we labeled what that area, what we consider that. Are we considering that McDowell shopping area? I mean, because I think that would help me, too, because it was a safety question. And one more thing, I was a little concerned when it said four out of five residents did not report a crime, but we give our police just the highest marks ever. I thought that was kind of an interesting, I thought that was an interesting statistic, and I don't know if it's just a property crime where people are like, oh, someone ran over, you know, took a lawn ornament out, and so I didn't report it. So if we could maybe drill down on that one in the future to see if there's something that we need to do, because our police officers do a phenomenal job, they're always out there. So if someone's not reporting something, what are they not reporting? But thank you very much, and thanks, staff. But thank you very much, and thank staff for all the hard work, it was great.
I'll just comment on that one. I think, now I should actually go look at the survey, but I think it's, the question asks, "Did you report a crime?" So some people may not have any crimes to report.
Okay, I think I read it the other way then, okay.
Yes. It's just kind of funny, because we phrase it the other way around when we report it, just to make it be positive instead of...
And even though four out of five, then what crime do we have? Because I think we have pretty low crime. So I guess that's just a...
Yeah, and we don't, you know, there's not a lot of detail there.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to figure that out.
If that was something you were interested in, yeah, you'd have to dig deeper in another way.
But I, thank you so much, great, great work.
Laura?
I also want to thank you for the work. I mean, goodness, great detail and great data that is helpful. I did take the survey online as a citizen, because I was not on council, and got to go through that process, even though I understood it doesn't really count. But there were many times that I wanted to make comments, and there was no avenue to do that, and so, you know, I would get to a thing, it's like, yes, but, or no, but, and there's no opportunity to elaborate. I am curious about the 24% response rate and how that compared to previous. Is that sort of normal level? It's, it is normal level. This is one of the challenges survey researchers are facing, is that in general, you know, response rates to all surveys are declining. One of the reasons we did the open participation survey is it's one of the avenues we're sort of exploring. Could that ever replace sort of our scientific survey if our response rates get really low? And the answer, you know, so far, is sort of, maybe. There's still some issues being explored. And then, to the part two about wanting to make comments, I'll just say, you know, what surveys are good at telling you is what people think and not why they think that way, and so sometimes it does take some additional work. And, you know, on an online survey, it might be easier for people to write in those comments, it's a little laborious on a paper survey, although even online, we find a lot of people, if you give them an open-ended response, they skip it, right? It's easier to just go click, click, click. But there are other ways too, to try to get that qualitative data, but an online survey could allow more opportunities.
Interesting. Any other comments? Brandon?
Yeah, thank you as well for the survey, and I thought, to everybody's point as well, I mean, it definitely helps to understand where we, at least validate some direction where we think we're going, where we think we're doing good at. I mean, it's good to get the response at a minimum, but to their point as well, I mean, it's always good to get more data, so we can get some more actionable items on them. But I actually took the survey, so it was, there's no spot in there to talk about the city council, but, no, it was, it was good. Yeah, I thought it would have been nice to have had some more specifics to drill down a little farther in it. But overall, yeah, I think it was good, and it definitely is positive overall, so at least I feel good about that. So at least help us out in our direction, so, thank you.
Great. Any other comments? Great job, thank you so much. I know how difficult it is, and I was thinking, if you have space for them to add things, I'm sure many people would actually tell about certain specific incidents that happened. They would target something like that. And so I think it'd probably be difficult not to have them do it. But I think council came up with a nice idea to add some other things in, that you want to see people's reactions. So, but they've hit all the broad points that we're doing now, where we're spending our money and where things are going, what we're going to build right now, it's under construction and all that. So I think, I think we know that's verified, because when, you know, people want things, but then we get, in the meeting, we give them budget and tell them how much that costs, and then people look at you and go, well, I didn't know it was going to cost us quite that much, but this verifies that people want what we're actually progressing with. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's, we're going to wait, pardon? I just left you ask something. All right, thanks again. Let's give a hand, applause for this, because that's a job. All right. Also, council will adjourn this meeting, and then we'll start the next meeting at 6 o'clock. This meeting is adjourned.